The Run Me Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 and Title of the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying you retrospect as well as posting notices in the Barrow Hall, Run Me Post Office, Mary Bolt School, Alliance Bankland School, Grace Downing School, and the Run Me Publics Tool District website. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, board members.
Mrs. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Farrell.
Here.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Here.
Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Baldi.
Also present, Mark Iainucci, Superintendent, Dr. Sean McCarron, this is Administrator, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jane Yessi, Principal, Bankland Downing School. Mr. Steve Peely is here, he'll be in the C-12 meeting with a parent. Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal, Paul School, Ms. Gladys Hubbard, Director of Special Education. At this time, I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from January 4th.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from January 4th.
Thank you, Maria. Second, is that Patty?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions there? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Baldi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Sure. We have some special guests here this evening. I want to ask some assistance from the Women's Club, Mr. Walter Willoughby, to help me out with Susan, Noah, and Leah introducing that and tell us a little bit about what's going on. So, Mrs. Dare, Mr. Maloney, take it away.
I'm going to invite Mrs. Kelly up too because she's the president of the Women's Club and she has the words in her hand. She had the words in her hand.
Yeah. Here we go.
All right.
You guys need other things? You all right?
I know, okay. Sorry, guys. The Women's Club is an organization that's been around, the Run Me Women's Club has been around for 75 years and nobody knows a lot about us. So, you can always come to a meeting anytime, but we hold an essay, short story contest with the kids in the school. It can be any grade, it can be, we choose, I guess, a specific grade, but from now on we can do it. We can do all the grades.
Let's go to that.
Yeah, we can do all the grades. Okay, Ms. Yessi?
Yeah.
Last year, we had a first place winner, the first place winner for this contest went to State and won states. So, they competed here and they'll get a prize here. The next step is they go to regional conventions and then they pick the winners there. So, but for our local winners, we have first place.
The third prize award is Lydia Lucia for Beyond the Home. Congratulations.
Stay up here.
Yes, please.
Come over here.
The second prize award for the short story contest is Noah Lipoff. This story is "One, Long Birthday and a Short Life." There you go, Noah, congratulations.
Thank you.
And the first prize, Susan Sims for Beyond the Home. Congratulations, Susan.
And guys, if you want to get together, Ms. Yessi's got it.
If I could just take one.
Do you want them over here?
Yeah, that would be great.
All right. You can have them over here.
Just so you guys know, we don't, we actually send them to somebody to judge them, just so there's no bipartisan that we know about. Okay. Okay, one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you.
Congratulations again to Susan, Noah, and Lydia, and thank you to the Women's Club. Are many other presentations or correspondence at this time? Okay. So, at this time, we are open for public comments on the agenda items only. Does anybody have any questions on this agenda here?
For our special guests who were just recognized, you don't want to stay for the board meeting? You don't have to.
We won't be offended. Congratulations again.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations. If there's no questions on agenda items, then Mr. Iainucci, it's back to your Superintendent for.
Can you mean everyone, just a few little couple things. District enrollment, we're actually at 47 kids, which is the highest rate of children we've had in the district, probably going back about five years, looking at previous reports that I've done. So, numbers up, we're about up to 25 from last year, about 40 students from two years ago. So, that's a positive. Preschool does have something to do with that, but we also have some pockets in elementary school that have numbers, which is good and sustainable. Dr. McCarron will talk about this, Pete loves this time of year, likes to call it budget and program planning for 24, 25 school year. He will mystify everyone at the March meeting with the pre-budget presentation with the budget hearing in April. He's very excited about that. It's like Christmas, Easter, any holiday, make it a problem. Preschool and kindergarten registration information is available on the district website. That's just been out in the last seven days or so. All that information is there. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact the school secretary, he's probably the best man with all that information. We are working on the 24, 25 school calendar. That will be presented at the March meeting. And DSY, some preliminary schedule will also be taking place in February. I'll give you their information as quickly as possible, so people are already planning some vacations, trips, other things they have to do. We have the memorandum of agreement, which is something we have to have signed every year, so just wanted to give you here five signatures on that. I'm also Chief of Police, a building principal, myself, and County Superintendent, we'll go with that on March 20th, we'll get that done. Budget numbers, next Tuesday will come out after the Governor's address and we'll have more information, Dr. McCarron and myself, do that budget planning. PTA, Founder's Day Dinner is Wednesday, correct? Valley Brook and the, oh, next one, sorry, yes, 28. And then RIA Basket fundraiser. Depth of planning begins on Friday night, Sunday this year. We do have a scheduled game for staff members and/or their spouses or children, if the staff members are able to play. We're going to have some, well, we haven't won a game yet, we'll try, I'm not optimistic for this year, I'm sorry to say. Dr. McCarron is lacing up his Chuck Dettler's issue, the Spencer Ross, that should be good.
Wait, 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 when's that happening? I'll be on regions.
We'll have that closer.
I need that live. I need that live. Mr. Iainucci's son has a playoff basketball game tonight, so I'm like, get that livestream up real quick so you don't miss your son.
If they lose tonight, you actually might be playing with us.
Oh, yeah, cool. We need him.
NJSLA assessments, grade three and five will start May 13th, grade six to eight will start May 13th, and also May 20th, kind of do that last year, kind of help us out a little bit. Of course, students will take a test in middle school grades with their teacher of those subject areas. We'll see some changes there, so we'll do that as well. That's all, half of the month of February, which is the end of the day, so March first is next one.
Any questions? No? Okay. Dr. McCarron?
As Mr. Schrelegel said, right now, it's just, everything's all budget, so the budget documents have to be fully filled out. Unfortunately, I have to like make predictions as far as where things are because we have not received our state aid numbers yet. They will be released after the Governor's State Address, which is next Tuesday, and usually the financial numbers then get loaded into our budget from the state by that Thursday, Friday. Once I have those numbers in, that's when I'm then able to back everything in to see where we are in each of those areas. So, right now, I'm trying to like place everything where I think I need it and then trying, I will be waiting to say and ensure the fact that we've always, knock on wood, bared well. I know the Governor made a comment that he was placing more money in education, however, that is a general comment that we hear every year. The question becomes is where in education is that getting placed and will Run Me see any of that? Based on our state aid numbers though, that's a hopeful sign for us. The other thing that we are planning for right now is our access testing has started, which is our ASL testing. That is through the end of March. Ms. Hubbard and myself will be working on DLM testing, which is specialized testing for special education students. And then as Mr. Iainucci said, NJSLA testing is posted on the district website under Curriculum and Instruction. The only date that is off is going to be the middle school six to eight, and because we listed this one week, it's actually going to span over two weeks because something we did last year was instead of having students test in their homerooms, we had students test with their subject area teacher. So, language arts teachers tested every single section of their language arts classrooms, math teachers tested every section of that. So, if a special area teacher has a homeroom, they are no longer testing students in language arts and math, just to try and make it as serious of an assessment as possible since the state does do things based on these numbers.
That's all I have. Anything for Dr. McCarron? Other district reports are attached, principals, nurses' reports, building and grounds reports, special education teacher report. Anything there? No? Okay. PTA report, Sam, do you have some stuff for us?
Yeah, just that Founder's Day is next Wednesday at Valley Brook at 6:00, it's going to be fun. And then we do have, we're called it, we're just calling it bowling night, but it's for male students K through three in their female chaperone. At our last meeting, it was kind of brought up that the boys really don't like the dance part, they run around crazy with their friends and the moms stay in the top. So, we're doing bowling so that it's not just the kids versus girls, they're actually having to like hang out with their chaperone or chaperone. So, we're doing that Saturday, March 9th at Westbrook. And that's pretty much it.
Do you have a basket auction thing?
I do, it's Friday, May 17th.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
I sound like a compliment in that regard.
And you'll, I did, Lindsay did reach out to me, so unfortunately, I can't make it, I'll be away next week, but I did know that a couple of members want to go. So, if anyone did not RSVP, could you please let Sam know tonight?
Yeah.
Because it's always a great time, so have, sorry.
And this is actually our ponderous.
I know, that's really, that's sad to me, I'm sorry that I'm missing it, so have a good time.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you guys do. Committee reports, do we have anything this month?
I was asked to be on the Legislative Committee for the State, and that meeting is the first Saturday at 9:00 a.m. via WebEx, so I'll be attending that and then I'll have a short report for you for that. And then I wanted to thank the administration for your help with inviting the science students to our first ever environmental series. Tonight was very, very well attended last night, and I wanted to acknowledge that, would thank you for your help, making sure that the kids get a little supplemental environmental program. We had a speaker from the Pineland come last night to St. Mary's Church, and it was very well attended and lots of questions, lots of great interactions, and we're working along with Barrington, Somerdale, there are green teams to do that and council and the Women's Club, so thank you for your help with that.
Mrs. Schreger and Mrs. Mass, we're very excited to help out and share that information, so.
Please, please, I'll give up our, our well wishes and thanks.
Anyone else? Any other reports at this time?
I have a book out my car that the Green Team is giving to Mrs. Schreger, I forgot to bring it in, so I'll bring it in when we're done.
Give it to Mr. Law.
Okay.
We'll follow you up there.
I believe that if anyone needs credits for the Delegate Assembly, I believe it's in mid-March, so please check your, the NJSBA website if you need to go to Delegate Assembly for any credits for your.
March or May?
It's not May.
Sure, May.
May, okay, yeah.
The deadlines for the resolutions are March, but May is.
Yeah, Patty and I are going to, are going to go.
Okay.
Right, Pat? Remember to go up together?
Yeah, because that's the only thing I need.
That's the only thing she needs, so I'll drive, you get your surf. Okay?
Very good.
Sounds good. So, we'll go.
May.
In May? Yeah, so I was like, no, 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 not March, it's May.
I just saw an email that said any resolutions are due.
Are due then, okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll move along to new business then. Property transportation, I need a motion to approve items numbers one and two.
I'll make a motion, this will be item number 122. Second.
Motion made by Patty, seconded by Naomi. Any questions there? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Baldi.
Personnel, I need a motion for items numbers one through 13. Motion made by Maria.
Second.
Seconded by Dennis. The only thing that was added there was a home monitor job description today. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Baldi.
Under curriculum, I need a motion for items one through six.
I'll make a motion for items one through six in the curriculum.
Motion made by Angel. Seconded by Patty. And again, it was just the one, there were PD added at the end there. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Baldi.
On the curriculum, we need a motion for items one through six.
I'll make a motion for items one through six in the curriculum.
Motion made by Maria.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Barbie. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Baldi.
Under policy of public relations, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through four. At the end, there was the MOA agreement with all enforcement added and some policies there. Motion made by Patty.
Second.
Seconded by Dennis. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Beebe.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Ms. Schrelegel.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Yes.
Ms. Baldi.
At this time, we are open for public comments. If anybody has any public comments, they'll, it would be the time, when you're called on, please state your name and your address. Does anybody have any public comments at this time? Yes, your name?
Vince Strunkel.
Hi, Vince, your address, please?
115 East Third Avenue.
East Third?
Just want to address the bullying going on in this school, it's out of control. And I spoke to Mr. Iainucci on the phone, and I know he's making movements to get it taken care of, including working with the police department and everything else, but I mean, I've seen comments of parents are pulling the kids out of school for homeschooling because it's so bad, other kids are just being tortured constantly. My son's, my son's been chased down from school numerous times, he was jumped on the lander from school, he gets chased by the same group of kids all the time, and last week or two weeks ago, he got his phone broken, a kid smacked out his hand, smashed something around. It's bad, and it's not just my son, and like I told Mr. Iainucci on the phone, I don't think my son's perfect, if he's doing something wrong, I'll be known about it. I don't care if kids get in trouble, don't get in trouble, I just want to handle it because apparently it's affecting a lot more than just my son, but he hates going to school anymore. And it was taken care of in school where a report was filed and it was deemed code of conduct, but when the same kids got the same code of conduct on the same person every day, and I really think that's just code of conduct at that point, that's considered bullying. And it's just out of control, and I know there's more parents, maybe some are here, maybe aren't, that are having problems with their kids being bullied too, it's just, it needs to get taken care of one way or another.
Thank you for your comment, that was brought to our attention a few months ago too, and so we are making sure that we're holding administrators accountable to make sure that they're holding children accountable. And like we said a few months ago, we need more parents like you that also hold their children accountable, unfortunately. Thank you for your comment, and thank you for advocating for your son. Yes?
Hey, Mark Jones, Cincinnati Avenue, I'm one of the parents, came along with him. I just wanted to give my two cents regarding the bullying issue. My grandson is about yay tall, and for his first year here, he was one of those victims of bullying, and I never spoke to the school, he'd never been suspended from school. The only okay that we gave him was to defend himself from school. He's now been suspended three times this year. Each time that he's been suspended, we've been told he was defending himself. So, if we have a bullying issue, what are the kids, what are the victims supposed to do? Because what, outside of standing outside and beating up kids ourselves as parents, right, like we, at some point, our kids have to be able to defend themselves when somebody's victim. So, if we're going to punish the kids who are, who we know have been victims of bullying from the bullies, like we know who the bullies are, most of us as parents have spoken, we all know who the kids are, and I don't want kids to be kicked out of school, I'm against any of that, right, but I don't think it's sending the right message if we're disciplining the kids who we know have been victims for protecting themselves from somebody who we know is an aggressor. I just, I don't, I don't see how that's helpful to kids, so I don't, I know our policy kind of is gray, I don't know what that, like what can we really do, but you can't, the other part is we're punishing kids who can actually defend themselves, so the worse to the beaten, they put on the bully, the bigger the punishment or the more up in arms everybody gets, but the school also, maybe you need parents to come to other parents, right, but if your kid is a bully and the schools had attempted to deal with it, but now your kid took a whelle of a beat down with somebody who could actually defend themselves, it's just not appropriate to treat it as though this was a one-off situation, like it just randomly happened. No, there are literally kids that can fight who don't fight because they're being raised properly, but at some point, you know, it's how we all know, that's how you keep a bully off of you. Now, I volunteer, I've done it, I stand up the street, I stand out on the street sometimes when the kids come out of school, I know most of the boys from basketball and sports, so of course, if I'm standing there, it's not going to happen, but I think as adults, like my kids don't lie, not to their benefit. So, even at school, they have teachers in school screaming at, who are bullies in school as teachers. This is the message that we're sending to kids. It's happening here, I know people know about it, but we, I don't know how to fix it, but I wanted to come and be a support of them because my kid had a fight with his kid before, but we as parents spoke about it. I was out here the next day, I called them right afterwards, I heard kids was talking nonsense about trying to keep it going, but as you know, you guys don't, we can't walk around the school all the time, and I don't know what more you guys could do, but something more has to be done within the school walls to keep this from continuing to happen because this is, it's starting here. It's not starting, as much as we want to blame social media and saying it's starting because the kids are on the game, we all hear our boys screaming out on the game all night long. We know who they're getting ready for from the game, it is starting inside these walls here, folks, so I don't know what to do, but.
So, we have been working with the police department, the local police department and administrative team, and as a board, we, you know, I can tell you that I personally as of, as of, as soon as earlier this morning and yesterday, like we just need to really look at our code of conduct again. You know, we do have laws we have to follow, unfortunately, this is a public school, so it's not like you're paying tuition to be here, we can't kick people out like other schools can, like private schools, but we definitely have to make sure that our code of conduct is revamped and followed.
And just to follow up with that, I did have a conversation with Mr. Peely on Friday. We met and we pulled some data, I know some concerns, nothing's being done. We're up to, as of Thursday, we're up to 430 incidents reported in school, that could be for anything, disruptive behavior, anything from language director teacher, rough physical contact, we're up to 50 school suspensions for the year, which is the most we've had probably in the last, I'm not counting the pandemic type of years, probably in the last three years. We're at 34 out of school susp, 35 out of school suspensions and 15 in school suspensions, and we break down the number of students, it's 11 to 12 kids total.
So, we know.
Which is less than 3% of the school population.
And just so you know, I'm all about disciplining them and suspending them. Sorry, that's my stance.
We're over 160 detentions.
And inconvenience in their parents.
Sorry.
Because not everyone's like you.
And that's why I did, what I did, when I spoke to Mr. last week, I did speak to other parents as well, see the common concerns, because I know this stuff pops up on social media. I'm not on Facebook, I don't even know how to use it, but when I hear things of that, people send me screenshots, people send me things, so I was like, well, who the parent, let me call them on the phone, let me see what's going on. Ms. Yessi's done it, Mr. Peely's done it, let me see, I don't, some of the people were talking about when they posted stuff, happened two or three months ago, you know what I mean, so it's not, well, has it happened since then? No. And then Mr. Peely addressed, we got some people that live in town that work for us, we try to, like, he hears things, he addresses it with them, so again, it's not going to be perfect. My wife's a teacher, she's, the same things are going on with her buildings, you know, she's also in the high school, she's, I'm not, I don't care about any of that, I know what's happening in our community, but we are trying to address it the best we can. Is it enough? No, but we are trying, so that's all I can say. And I would be more happy, you know, I've reached out to you on the basketball issues, please you know, pick up the phone, give me a call.
I don't take issue with that, and for myself, a part of this in our community is because I'm a part of this community.
Absolutely.
Like, I interact with all of the kids, and I don't, but the reason why we don't Like I interact with all, all of the kids and I don't, but the reason why we don't have the same issues that we had initially was because I've let kids and parents know, I grab kids, I'm not, this is not an issue for us. But it is an issue within the school, right? So if you have a student who was coming home and complaining of being bullied, right? And then we, there was no, I didn't come to school and complain about it because I don't raise, I also try to raise my kids to have tough skin. So I'm not gonna come to school and complain every time you complain about a kid. But if there was no interaction there, and then as soon as we talk to defend yourself, now what we're seeing is suspensions, then what was happening when he was being bullied? People were seeing it, right? Like it, it was happening, he was reporting it to teachers, but there was nothing further, even if the other kid is being disciplined. I don't know if, I, I know you guys can't call and say, hey, Charlie smacked your kid yesterday, so we're suspending him for three days. But a phone call or, or communication that says, hey, we're aware of an incident with another student and we're dealing with it, maybe that communication needs to happen more, sort of parents are aware when you guys are actually dealing with situations before it gets out of hand. Right? And, and again, I, I will say, there's something to be said for the adults in, within this building and their interaction with the students and what that looks like. When kids are getting suspended or having negative interactions because the teachers having a bad day. Or there was another bad interaction that happened earlier, so now when a teacher comes in a room, their interaction with the students is not where it's appropriate, where it should be at, right? Those type of things in a school setting can't happen with an expectation that we're going to decrease the amount of kids that are getting suspended in the school. It, it just can't. And I, that is happening here. I, I did wanna come here and say that today, that's happening here in the school. There are teachers that talk to kids raptically, and, and which is not appropriate if you want positive change. And clearly we have a problem in the community with kids being bullied on the walk home, and fights happening in people's yards on the walk home. It's clearly become a big enough issue.
But we look at numbers too, right? So, you know, I call him because he has to answer to us. And I was like, I need numbers, I need, like, don't tell me, I need, I need, I need data to prove what are you doing? You know, because our, our code of conduct, we just need to make sure that's not outdated as well. That's what we can do here. We can't parent kids, we can't come here during the day, we're here to, we're here to create policies, right? That's what we're here for.
Don't you keep my kids.
No, no. Listen, you don't want my 16-year-old. So, yes, do you have something else to add?
Yeah, I just, I can say, my thing said, our two kids, I literally met Mark the week before, and our two kids have an incident at their school. Those incidents on the way home from school aren't even numbers in your numbers.
Right. And we can't, and we can't clone parents like you either.
He called me and I said, what's going on? And here what happened was, and I'm not trying to make an excuse, but my son, who Maria had seen jumped, and she came to my house saying, you need to call the cops and everything else. I watched it happen, is he okay? Like she was that concerned, it was that bad that day.
Yeah.
And what happened was, my son was so tired of being beat up and bullied on that he started trying to act like a tough guy. And it actually, the incident started at school, there was word exchange at school. And because he called me, I was like, yo, what's going on? I said, no, that doesn't fly in my house, this is gonna be addressed now. And from what I know and he knows, my son literally went up and apologized to his son the next day because my son was completely wrong in that situation. I said, why are you acting like that? And I finally got out of him, I'm just trying to find a place to fit in, like, I just thought it would help.
It's really important, it's really important in middle school to fit in, unfortunately.
It doesn't, it doesn't help because you're just acting like those guys that you don't like. If you don't like them, who's gonna like you? But like, it's out of control to the point where it's just, I mean, if kids are doing that and then, you know, I, Mr. Maloney has found their kids.
I want you to continue to call the school, call Mr. Maloney, call Mr. Peely. Anytime you hear anything, that doesn't mean you're a snitch. Anytime you hear anything, I, don't say anything out in the public meeting, but you can say whatever you know on a phone call, a private phone call, because you're here advocating for your, for your children right now, but nothing's gonna change if we don't know specifics, right? So like, I understand you want them to have tough, thick skin, but maybe they don't know that Papa made the call. You know what I'm saying? Because we can't fix something that we don't know about. Not everybody is like you, man. Like, you know, you're old school like us, like me, like, like how, that's how we grew up. But like, that's not, that, that the 11, 12 kids' parents, unfortunately, they're not like that. Because there's no, no, no behaviors changing.
On Mr. Maloney's behalf, one time, I mean, my son was having a problem, the same kid was chasing the men from school on a bike every day. Threatening to beat him up, threatening to beat him up. My son would sprint from life, from life bar, crossing guard to crossing guard to make sure that it didn't happen. And Mr. Maloney, I said, hey, that guy's been chasing my son. And he literally went up to him, talked to him and said, hey, if you touch him or there's another problem, I find out about you, hit you down, we're gonna let the police know.
Yep.
And it stopped for a little bit, and then the kid used to go across the street and just scream stuff. Well, you can scream stuff at my kid all you want, I don't care. I mean, I care, but you're not physically hurting him. He's not threatened at that point. But it's back to the same group of five or six kids on bikes chasing them every day. I mean, he tried to come to a basketball game one day and got homeless here to watch the kids play and got chased all the way back home to my house across the street and down by five kids on a bike. So.
Thank you for coming and advocating for your son.
Like I said, I know it's not just my son, I know there's other parents out there.
We know too, we know too. Any other pot of comment?
What other supports can the school offer to some of the parents whose kids might be part of this 11 or 12, outside of just the numbers to call perform here? Because I've, I've interacted with a couple of the parents and none of them have been.
We've had, obviously the police have been involved, we have a couple of kids on station house adjustment where their parents are fined, they have community service hours, things like that. If they do get in trouble in or out of school, those fines can be increased, so can the punishment be increased.
Because we don't have, what else can we do except that? I mean, that's like, that doesn't, I mean, I lived here for 46 years, like, things like that, that don't hap-, like, didn't really happen. You know what I mean? Like, to the point where we have to, like, fine the parents.
We do have our social, our social worker has worked, our social worker has worked with some of those families to find outside council services for them. Again, not to get into specific kids, but there's some kids in any community, this one included, that have serious, you know, either whether it's anger issues, whether it's lack of supervision, whether, whatever it might be, you know, and we're trying to address those issues. And it is to try to pinpoint and target specific students. And unfortunately, we have it in all three buildings, not just the old school.
So what would the numbers need to look like for you guys to advocate for a district to get some additional services in the schools?
District already has more services than most of the small districts are size. As a district, we have a BCBA, which is a behavioral consultant who comes in three days a week. We have registered behavioral technicians who work very closely with myself and Ms. Hubbard. We have a BCABA, which is at that same level. And then on top of that, we've already been in conversation, because our child, with child study team regarding our numbers, to ensure the fact that possibly bring in another school psychologist slash behavioral consultant on top of that. So when you talk to other school districts to find out what behavioral supports, we had an additional guidance counselor for four or five. So that way, Ms. Mangino was doing four through eight. We have a guidance counselor, Ms. Callahan, who's K through three between Vingham and County. So I mean, we have three counselors. We have, Ms. Maddie's our social worker who does counseling with mostly our middle school students. We have Ms. Hubbard, who has students in and out of our office all day long doing counseling. We have, um, we, we have, we have a ton of supports and we're looking to add more. But it's a process. And it's a whole team effort, because we can do everything within, you know, within our powers of the time that we have students. But we're a walking district. That bell rings, students are walking home. A few meetings ago, Mr. Iainucci, Chief Tenpolski, were literally like walking, you know, our administration were walking the streets to make sure that fights weren't breaking out on the front of, front lawns of people's homes. So I mean, it's a team effort. And at the end of the day, like, we are continuing to look for what services we can provide. But we do have services in the school that are already in place and are working with the students, many of which are listed in those numbers.
Like, I can tell you that the chief is my brother. He was in my office the other day and received a phone call from Mr. Iainucci to come meet with parents about a child here. I'm like, what? Because it, that child is a problem to the point where they're at their wit's end. So they're literally bringing the police in the meetings.
Right, so part of my, part of my concern though, I'm not a parent that's okay with the police being involved with the kids, period. I got black kids, and I don't know if you guys know the history, but that ain't worked in my favor. So that's not something, so the discipline part, while I understand it, that that's why my question went to, what, what type of numbers would you guys need? Because I, what, our guidance counselor for certain grades, that's supposed to be there. And we all know it's funded aside from the fact that you guys haven't had it all. But what more can maybe we do as parents, whatever advocacy do we need, whatever supports maybe are available as far as additional counseling services within the school for some of the kids that have these additional.
We do, we use CareSalus, we use CareSalus, where parents have used that. And it's right on the website where if there's an issue with a student, with their child, they log on, it's all confidential. And we do have parents using that, some of the parents, some of the same. 11, 12 kids that I'm talking about are involved in the services. But again, it only takes it so much. And then as kids get older, and you know, as you have older kids, it gets more challenging with those behaviors. Because now a kid who, in their second or third grade, is not, they're still scared of their parent a little bit, which they should be. I'm still scared of my 87-year-old mother, you know what I mean, in some ways. But when they hit middle school and stuff like that, then it becomes, they're trying to find that independence as a kid, right? You know, you have kids that age. I had the same thing, so.
We have to do something.
We're trying to get them involved, but they need to, again, parents need to do their job as well. We can only do so much in a seven-hour period, you need to do more, you're right. We're trying to bring as many services as we can, we're trying to educate the kids, we're trying to, you know, have those discussions. I will have discussions with the administration about, you know, demeanor of staff, if that's the case. But again, like I always say, if you're having a problem with a staff member, you need to call that staff member first. And if you're not happy with that answer, call the principal. If you're not happy with that answer, call me, right? And then we'll try to, I, I've intervened this year probably more than I have in the last couple of years, which I'm not opposed to doing, but sometimes people jump to principals and just call me directly. And then, I don't, I'm not in school every day, I don't know. I don't know when Joey gets off the bus or when, you know, Claire goes to class, what happens? They know more than I do, so I usually redirect that first to the principals. If they're not happy with that answer, then call me. And I mean, I have two meetings tomorrow with parents in the afternoon, some of those students that, you know, are challenging right now.
I'm not trying to be rude, Melissa had her hand up first.
That's fine.
Melissa Warner, U D and I are in grab. First, thank you, Mr. Iainucci, for everything and taking all those calls. But if we're putting more services in the school, like we're talking about with, you know, the counselors and everything, it's clearly not working now. So is there any way that we can come up with either one class or a behavioral class or something like that? Or another class where these kids are split up and not more together? And then searching them throughout the teachers, so the same teacher doesn't have the same 11, 12 kids and we're splitting them up? Because I think a lot of it is, it is starting in school. And, you know, they're talking, specifically that fight was started in school and it was egged on from the door all the way to the corner. But that's great that you guys wanna bring in all these other people, but I don't know if that's necessarily gonna work. You know, I think there needs to be either, like, we have money if we're having programs, like, we need to put that into effect and maybe make separate small classes. Need a special behavioral class teacher. I mean, in-school suspensions are up or whatever suspensions. I mean, honestly, an in-school suspension is probably not gonna do anything. These kids don't care, we know who they are, they don't give a crap. So something else needs to be done, not in, I understand that rules have changed, but, you know, I mean, being disrespectful to a teacher, your teacher's not gonna deal with it either. And the teachers here, I personally don't have a lot of problems with them, they've gone above and beyond for my son more than I could ever ask. And I mean, I wouldn't wanna deal with that every day. And also, isn't it, the code of conduct, that needs to be more clear. It's been in place, so it should have been followed. So I don't know if there's like that much of a gray area, because when I looked it up way before, when we brought up the bullying things, it was very clear on the standards of what it was. It was just, didn't seem like kids were maybe getting put into that, or we were just doing in-school suspensions like before we had said. Kids were still going to basketball games if they were suspended.
Oh, that was, I, I just wanna clarify that, that was a misconception last time a couple of months ago. The student who was suspended was not the student who was participating in the basketball game.
Okay, but there is some other instances though, like, just if we're following it, then some of those things I don't think would have happened. And aren't we a door-to-door district? So from here to our.
We had this conversation, so technically no district is door-to-door, okay? It's not, once, it's off, once you're off school property, there's no such thing really as a door-to-door, you know, policy. I know there's some disagreeing with that, I mean, it is, you know, we're doing the best we can with, with some of those instances, but there's no such thing as door-to-door. Because I could have a kid walk home, drop his book bag, and then walk back and then have that.
Right, so my, my dad lives right there when I was in middle school, literally, he lives right there. So I could have been home by two, oh five.
I was just saying, because I didn't know about that. I heard that it, maybe it was, that's why I was just asking.
And I'm not saying we haven't held kids accountable for that behavior in the past, and we had this year as well. Especially the stuff that was happening, I wish we could leave the street. First, we did help, help the kids accountable for that.
No, you guys say great without, yeah.
But it's still not, but I'm just saying, like, we are trying to hold kids accountable for when they're leaving.
I think what she meant was like, make, like, like, after a couple of months ago, when the parents came here and complained, as a board, we said, if the parents in this community are coming to our school board meeting complaining that kids aren't being disciplined, the code of conduct must be followed. So I think, like, that's what I was trying to, to say. Like, yes, you're correct, it was always there, because you were talking about what I said.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I'm trying to agree, I was just saying, like, yeah, it wasn't there, it seemed pretty, it seemed pretty clear from what I read online.
Right, but when you come to me and you complain to me that you don't think the code of conduct is being, or any of us, right? Is we, then what is our job? We're elected officials, our job is to say, we have a policy in place about discipline, make sure it's handled, make sure everyone.
Maybe that's why the numbers are up, is because it is being followed.
Well, I hope they are up, they should be up, they should be up. I support that 100%, they should be up.
Need to find some other.
Well, if you have any ideas, maybe more than happy.
Hey, you like to discuss that.
I, I don't know, yeah. Because Mr. Iainucci's my friend right now. I, I, I would prefer not to be here, I, you know, I just, something's gotta be done. There's gotta be a class, we got money, you got a, the teacher or something else, because I mean, it's inside of that.
That's also easier said than done in the state of New Jersey. There's a teacher shortage right now, especially for a teacher, because I have that certification to teach students like that. And I have taught at the high school that population, and that's not something that we can do like next week, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, but I'm just saying.
We'll, we'll take that into consideration, it is budget season. And then I'm gonna, could you just like have one more comment, because I'm not trying to be rude.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, like, I know that things, like, you guys are trying to take action. I don't agree with the methods, I know I talked to Mr. Iainucci on the phone that one day. You know, people are trying to look out for these kids that are getting bullied. But like, the kids that are getting bullied, kinda like Mark said earlier, they're the ones actually being punished, like, special treatment, like, oh, maybe we can let him out of class, cut him in the jelly, says he get bullied in the hallway. Well, then just give these bullies something else to feed off of at that point. Or he's getting picked on in the locker room of a gym class, so let's let him get changed in the nurse's office, so he's not around those other kids. Like, yeah, that's a.
So you're saying that the kid that's being bullied is the one that is getting like, has to do something different?
Yes, like my son, the things they want to do, I was like, I disagreed with. I'm like, no, he should be having that normal school experience. Where the ones that are doing the things wrong are the ones that should be getting that special treatment. Like, hey, no, you wanna pick on somebody in the lunchroom, you go sit by yourself.
I agree.
You know, stuff like that.
And we do have, and we do have some of those things in place, and, you know, again, I'll go back and have conversations.
That's, that's fine, no, I know that these guys are trying, and like I said, I know it's something to try and protect these kids that are being bullied, so it's something that's kinda being done. I just think that if these kids are doing the bullying, are the ones getting punished, rather than the ones that aren't, that are getting bullied, I just think that that'll be more effective than just trying to protect, rather than just protect, let's discipline where it belongs. Like I said, if no one else gets bullied the rest of the year and nobody gets in trouble, I'm more than happy with that. It's just a matter of, if it's not going to stop, a different direction kinda needs to be taking place.
And I'll be in touch with you.
That's fine. Like I said, I know that you're working on it, you called me, I appreciate it, we had the talk on the phone. And I'm just here to make sure that it stops for all these kids, not just my son.
Thank you, thank you. Yes?
All right, so my name's Michelle Parkins, I live on Omar Avenue. What, the only thing I really wanted to bring up here today was, about a year ago, I was gonna move, I was moving back to Pennsylvania, Maria knows this. And the first thing that I did was I looked online at all the different school districts and all the different towns to find out what the parents were saying about the school districts. What are the parents saying, how do they feel, what do they, what do they like, how are some bullying, how's the special education, things like that? When I go onto the unofficial Runny Me page and other pages for Runny Me and I read that there's boys that are punching little girls in the faces and that their kids can't walk home, somebody pulled their kids out for, for bullying, now they're homeschooling their kids, which I mean, I'd rather jump off the bridge, to be honest, but. Aside from that, um, you know, that was determined, that was determined from moving here, right? So then you have parents, like all of us that are sitting in this room right now, that wanna be part of this community and make this community better. But who do you think's gonna wanna move here when they read that? Nobody, nobody's gonna learn from that.
I mean, I understand, but I can't control who posts or who even read on the official Facebook page.
But if there's something in place and there's a communication with the parents, like, you know what, we hear what's going on and we understand that, and these are the things that we're doing, well then other parents, like the parents that are in this room, can repost there and say, hey, you know what? They are doing something about that, that was an isolated insulation. There's only 3% of the kids that are in the middle school that are actually having, you know, cause this issue. Because when you see things like that in the terrorist people, you know, that's.
No, I, I understand that, but we also can't act as a school district on every single person who posts negatively about our school district on social media. Because that would be a full-time, we'd have to hire someone for that.
Yes.
We're a small town, we don't, we want an extra teacher, we don't want a PR person. But like, other small towns do have that, you know? But we're like, no, we're not doing that, you know?
But at the same time, like hearing what Mr. Iainucci said today, that there's 3% of kids that are having their issue. Okay, well, that looks a lot better than when you go on there and it seems like it's the whole school district that's having this issue. So now, you know, somebody else can go back and be like, yeah, but it's only, you know, 3% of kids, whatever. I understand it's more than that. But you know, that, that makes a huge difference on the whole economy in this whole town.
I agree. Also, we can't do that, none of us on this board can do that ethically, it's a violation. Like, I can't go on that comment.
I didn't know that until tonight, that there was only 3%.
I didn't know that till this afternoon.
That's what I'm saying, so things like that are helpful. When, when you're bringing these things up here and then you're giving us information that, okay, well, the statistics really aren't as bad as they seem. Okay, well then that, that's helpful, and that's something that we can reiterate back to the town.
When you're out and about.
Well, us, I know you guys can't do that.
No, we can say it, we can't post it on social media, because it's a violation.
Right.
We can say it, if I see you, if I see people at the ROI Cancer Weekend on Sunday, I can say that if someone approaches me. Or in Wawa, we can say that, you know what I mean? But like, we, because he had answer, like, they had to give us an answer, we had to say, like, what, what is going on? Like, we see that, I see that, I'm, I'm, he's not seeing it. But he's like one in a million who doesn't have social. So like, we see it though, we see it.
But things like that in meetings are helpful and it's also, I don't think you're allowed to post something like that, not on Facebook, on the, on the Runny Me website, like, you know, the bullying, it's being handled, there's three, there's only 3% of the issues that we're having. Something that is a little bit more than nothing, a little bit more transparent.
Well, that can be posted on the official website, like.
I could even send a, I could send a communication.
He can send, he can send a letter, an email.
A lot of parents are concerned, so that would be helpful if you gave that information.
That, that, that's easy, that could be done this week.
Thank you. And then with the 11, 12 students, there's no way to make them have a different means of transportation to get home?
Look, uh, no, we won't have any money, the lawsuit's $150,000.
We do have some, we do have some of the parents picking the kids up, of their students. And also a couple of students are getting transportation, that was an issue before. So yeah, we do have some things. And so as far as the, that, I'd say that the walking home thing with the specific, like, mile, that was less than, that was probably five or six kids that were repeat, repeat offenders. You might know more, you might see, I'm talking to kids like every day, it was like, you know, Mark Iainucci, I saw him on Hersh, I saw him on Third, I saw him on Second.
That's about six of them on the walk, that's a good number.
I told some kids, probably two weeks ago, you know, watch your mouth, because I had my five-year-old in the car with me and they were, they're in middle school, you're, you're trying to use all the words you can possibly imagine in your head, you know, which is, and they were very respectful. And they were like, you know, sorry ma'am.
Well, again, eleven, eleven and twelve kids are given all of the kids in Run Me a band rap, right? Like, that's, that's the unfortunate thing.
So can I say though, as, as important as it was, as she's saying that you guys gave that, the numbers to us just now, I think that's a point for the kids in the school to know that also.
Yes, it is, you're right.
Right, so that they stop carrying this idea that we're, there's this thug community, right, that everybody's a gangster.
Because they're from Run Me.
Right.
Run Me.
But sometimes kids just.
Just joking, just making sure we're still where we grew up, like, Run Me, yeah.
Right, and, and, and that we're, we're, I, I don't know, John, one of the bullying and some of these that you guys have, or the H R B report when it comes out, like, something that just started, kids, hey, listen, we know that it's not ninety-seven percent of you guys that are part of this problem, and we appreciate you guys for not doing that. Because the kids tend to feel like nobody's paying attention to those eleven and twelve kids and they're just getting away with bloody murder in the school.
Well, they are all afraid of me, just so you know. We all are, we gotta hire Maria.
I'm afraid of you.
All right, at this time, I'm not trying to be rude, but I want to get, um, Mr. Iainucci out here, so maybe he can see some of his, uh, son's playoff game.
So one other question, separate from bully, nothing to do with bullying. How do you make decisions for this, well, I know that the sports coaches are usually in the, from the district, then has to be, you know, teachers, right?
That's a union thing, it's a union role contract.
How do we come up with who the actual, like, if the same coach is the same coach for ten years, and you have ten years where the parents that come to the school, they have the same story about that coach, you know it's in a contract, maybe there's another teacher that may be better.
It's very difficult to find, um, staff to do extracurriculars. We have some that are just either parents from town or just people that have so, and that's something I'd call either Mr. Maloney or call myself back, have that conversation with you, not in public.
Yeah, because it's a contract issue, so we got to be careful, they'll be staying there.
And they are obviously evaluated, um, you know.
They do get an evaluation coaches, though, that's a fact.
But that's something I can, I'll, I'll reach out, I'll touch, I'll talk about your Knicks too. I'm worried about those Knicks.
All right, the next board meeting will be here, March twentieth, six thirty start, right back in the car? Okay, um, I need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Maria, second, Daddy, all in favor?
Aye.
I say that the meeting is adjourned seven twenty-three.